I hereby call to order the regular meeting of the Ojai Planning Commission at 6:00 PM on April 3rd, 2019. Sherri, could we have a roll call, please?
Chair Colsey.
Here.
Vice Chair Nolan.
Here.
Commissioners Powers.
Here.
Jiggy ELO.
Here.
Corbin.
Here.
Lottis.
Here.
One vacancy, and we have James Vegas City in for Luke Conley.
Wonderful, wonderful. Okay, and next is the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Nolan, if you would lead us.
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is Public Communications. The time set aside during the Planning Commission meeting for members of the public to address the Planning Commission on items of city business other than scheduled agenda items. Matters raised this time may be briefly discussed by the Commission and will generally be referred to staff and/or placed on a subsequent agenda. Under state law, other than for emergency items, no action can be taken at this meeting. Do we, I have no cards, no speaker cards for public communications. And I see one gentleman in the crowd. Did you wish to speak during public communications? Are you here for an agenda item, or?
I'm here for an agenda.
Very good. Then seeing no requests for public communications, we'll move on to disclosure of site visits and ex parte contacts. Only one site is relevant this evening, and that is, excuse me, the eight-unit condominium project at Eliso and Rincon, basically. The cottages among the flowers. So Commissioner Powers, could we start with you?
Yes, I thought you were going to go over the minutes. It's okay.
Yeah.
I did visit the site. I had no ex parte contacts.
Okay.
I visited the site in the past, but it had no ex parte contact.
I have also visited the site in the past with no ex parte contacts.
And I visited the site and had no ex parte contact.
I visited the site, had no ex parte contacts, but I will be recusing myself from Item Two because a corner of my residence is within 500 feet of the project.
I'm familiar with the site, and I have no ex parte contacts.
Okay, thank you. Consent items would be the minutes of the regular meeting of the Planning Commission, March 20th, 2019. Do we have any additions or corrections to the minutes? Yes.
I have a correction.
Yes.
Let me put my page here. So if you go to the last page, page three of three, it's very minor, and this was the reports that were given. And it says that I gave the Complete Streets report, but I was actually at the Planners Academy that night, so I didn't give a report.
That was your call. We didn't have a meeting.
Oh, you never even had a meeting? Oh, okay.
The Complete Streets meeting?
Maybe I misunderstood that. It sounded like it was the minutes from the 6th, right?
March 6th.
Yeah, and I know I wasn't.
That is the one where you were absent, and I was there.
Yeah, and you were there.
Did I not talk about the March 6th meeting? Does anyone remember?
Was this last week? I mean, the last meeting?
I don't think so.
I don't think we did, I don't think you did the report.
Well, I had done, I had done the minutes and sent them to you for.
Okay, so neither one of us reported.
Okay, so neither one of us reported. So we should just strike that line.
Yeah. That was my only change.
Any other changes to the minutes? Yes, ma'am?
No.
Oh, okay. Will I entertain a motion for approval?
I'll make a motion.
As amended?
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes as amended for the, I'm looking for the date again, I've got to flip my page back, thank you. Yep, for the March 20th, 2019, meeting of the Planning Commission.
I'll second that.
Very good. Any other discussion? Could we have a roll call, please?
Powers?
Yes.
Jiggy ELO.
Yes.
Corbin.
Yes.
Nolan.
Yes.
Colsey.
Yes.
Lottis.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Since that's on the signature page, I'll return it to you and sign it another time. All right. Next up is, oh.
The time extension.
The time extension for the cottages among the flowers, and I have to recuse myself, so you're in charge.
Item two is a time extension for a retroactive, one-year time extension to September 1st, 2019, for the design review permit DRP 05-01, RV 01, for an eight-unit condominium project and the related site improvements located at 312, 312A-F and 314B on West Eliso Street, Cottage Among the Flowers. Can we have the staff report, please?
Excuse me, this is a consent item, and it's just a vote item unless somebody pulls it from the consent calendar and moves it to a public hearing. So it's just a voting item.
In other words, we don't, we can't ask questions or anything?
No, not unless you pull it from the consent calendar.
Oh, 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 okay, and I didn't do that.
I'll make a motion to approve the time extension.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Can I make one comment?
We have no questions at all?
No.
Yeah.
Powers?
Yes.
Jiggy ELO.
Yes.
Corbin?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Lottis?
I would say that my only comment, my only concern with this project was the condo conversion, which has already been approved, and it's not at issue tonight, and therefore I will vote yes.
Thank you. Motion passes. Chair, you can come back in. Chair, you can come back in.
Heard speech, it didn't sound like a vote.
I'll make it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes, we're done.
Can I make one comment?
Please step up.
And this is just a general comment, is that the planning approvals that you receive are for one year. This one actually had some interesting language because it didn't state when it expired, but by code, it's apparently one year, which in this city is impossible to get your building permit in that timeframe. So it seems like a change might be needed so the planning director could extend that instead of going through a whole process to go to a hearing and writing a report that has already been written before. And that's what happened in this case. We were working our building plans for quite a while, and then finally got the approvals, but it was after that one-year date. So it just seems like a lot of extra work for no real, with no real change, other than continue to move forward, as long as somebody's working on their plans.
Okay, yes, go ahead.
I just want to say that in Massachusetts, every permit is issued with a minimum of three years to do your project, which is much more reasonable than one year, which we do here. Extensions are not an issue, and I really think we need to examine that.
Ventura, I do a lot of work in Ventura, and that's, that's what they are, they're on a three-year basis, so.
Three?
Initially, three-year.
A question for staff, then. One year or three years to do what? To complete the project, or to show substantial progress, or to begin the project? What?
To begin the project.
One year to pull building permits, basically. So it's one year before, if you don't pull building permits within a year, it expires. The community development director.
The design review permit expires? Is that what expires?
Yes, yeah, yes. And the community development director actually does have the ability through the code to extend it, but they have to extend it before it expires, and if they don't, it ends up.
Ah, that's why.
It ends up back here.
Okay.
So hopefully, we're catching those kinds of things, but, but in this case, we did not.
Yeah, we had, I think it was last meeting or the one before, we had another one like this, where there was a retroactive time extension.
Yeah, it was the last meeting, you're right.
Last meeting, okay.
Yeah, thanks for pointing that out.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, a discussion item, proposing topics to discuss at the May 14th, 2019 joint meeting with City Council. If you'll turn to tab three, there's a list of things that, that we discussed at the January 8th joint meeting with City Council, and things that were proposed. I see of the four that I proposed, two of those have already been dealt with, composition of the Planning Commission and commission absences. Looks to me like the others are still to be done. Fences, hedges, walls, and screening will come up at the next Planning Commission meeting on the 17th of March, April, excuse me. I will be absent, I will be out of town that day.
I will also be absent, I will be out of town.
Okay, well, there's still four. That's a quorum to deal with that. The, the actual meeting with the City Council is May 14th, so some of these things we may discuss as a commission before we get back to the City Council again. But are there other topics that commissioners would like to include in the list? Yes, ma'am?
I'm wondering if we want to begin a discussion on the general plan update. I know that it's, we're going to have to look at things, what have you, and I'm wondering if speaking or sharing with City Council at this moment, what their, if they have any ideas on a direction they're going with as far as the general plan, or some topics they may want us to start discussing and looking at.
Okay.
Because I think that's a real, a big thing that's coming that would be prudent to do that.
As it says here at the bottom at the meeting, Mayor, this is the meeting of January 8th, I guess. Mayor Johnston stated, "The fundamental activity of the Planning Commission should be land use planning." I take that to be both the land use map and the zoning map. But we seem to have been left with design guidelines as part of our, our bucket list as well.
When I joined the Planning Commission, I was made aware that not only were we doing land use planning, but we were also doing architectural review, which would cover the design guidelines and what have you.
Okay.
So Sherri, I.
There is no separate architectural review board here in the city.
No, there isn't. So we're kind of a combination, right? And so that's why those items like what paint color, and is it compatible with the design guidelines come to us as well.
Things that the BAB deals with now, used to be part of the Planning Commission as well, before the state law required a separate BAB.
Exactly. So anyway, that, that was my recommendation to do kind of an upfront, talk about the general plan.
Find out, find out if there, if there is an anticipated schedule for doing a general plan update, and if so, I mean, if, whether there's a schedule for it or not, I guess, if the City Council or the mayor says, "Yes, we're going to do that, and your job is to look at land use planning," have we learned anything?
That could be.
By, by asking the question. This is one I always struggle with. If, if you're going to do what you're going to do, no matter what the answer is to the question, then you needn't answer the question, or ask the question, excuse me. But, but what, what aspect of the general plan did you have in mind asking a question about?
How about a schedule?
I think a schedule would be great.
Yeah, and it wasn't even just a schedule, it was really kind of the overarching approach, which kind of gets, ties into almost all the elements, which we invariably have to look at. Also, you know, you brought up Bobby at the last time, that one about a vision, I mean, that's of course part of the general plan. I know I had mentioned, you know, sustainability or climate resilience, and some places, it's the overarching element over the entire general plan, or, you know, are we going to add climate resilience through all the elements, or a climate action plan, just things like that. And then, if there was anything that they wanted us to, to look at or discuss. So I'm, it's pretty broad scope, and I know we've only gone an hour, but I'm wondering.
Well, we certainly couldn't get through all of this stuff in an hour, and it's not necessary that we do.
No, but, and I know that, like you said, some of these are coming back to us, and I know that on, if we look at our schedule.
Well, fences, hedges, walls, and screening is coming back at the next Planning Commission meeting. Cleanup of the municipal code is sometime in the suite, by and by, I think. We haven't, we haven't seen anyone that, that wants to take that on, and I haven't heard anything about anyone hiring a consultant to do it either.
Right, we also have the, design guidelines are coming up, it looks like.
April 17th.
Yeah, on the April 17th.
On the 17th, okay.
Yeah, and so that.
As a discussion item, yeah.
Yeah, and that was one of the topics.
Right, that was one of yours, okay.
And then the, you know, Bobby's, Commissioner Corbin's develop a vision ties into the general plan.
Certainly.
And I'm, so.
And.
Well, in addition, I mean, just as kind of a subtopic too, is affordable housing, and given the.
Yes.
High priority and emphasis on this, by the state on this, I, I was, I don't know if we want to add more topics, but I did think it would be worth a few minutes discussion with the council, just to talk about what their view is on it, and, you know, kind of a strategic approach to this for the city, because there are some perhaps more near-term issues that the city should think about, other than waiting for the general plan updates.
Right, and then what's the, where are we at on the cycle with the housing element? When it, will it be coming back for an update?
It's coming up.
That's what I thought.
We, right now, what we're doing is we're reaching out to try to get SCAG, Southern California Association of Governments, come out and do a kind of a RENA overview report to council, so we're starting that process.
Right, so it's timely, yeah.
I think the affordable housing too, just if I could add one thing, is there, in, we're planning at the next council meeting to start the discussion of one of the concepts that, that is being worked on right now, so I think it will be good timing to talk about that plan.
See if we can figure out why Thousand Oaks' RENA number is one, and our number is 300 and something.
300, yeah, exactly.
Beverly Hills had one, I remember hearing that, too.
And, but the, if I can add one more thing, the general plan update and, and the vision, I think those are still good topics, because, the vision and the schedule, because I think as part of the schedule, we're going to plan some workshops and things to start talking about that. So I think by talking about the schedule, we're talking about all those steps, so I think those are good topics, too.
Okay.
I'd like.
A general plan update with a schedule would be.
And then, from there, we could talk about.
Would be a high priority, and then what is our piece of it?
Yeah.
And land use planning is.
Tied into it.
It's tied in, but that's a little too vague for me to grab something and say, "Okay, here's something I can do to contribute then."
Yeah, and I think we can talk about, as part of that general plan update, we can talk about what the Planning Commission's role in the process will be, when we're scheduling those things, and when we're going to hold the workshops.
Okay, I, would we agree that that's probably the first thing we want to talk about when we get to this meeting?
I'd like to weigh in on it.
Yes, sir.
And my answer to that is yes. I agree with Commissioner Nolan that the general plan is the overarching direction of the whole city, and personally, I feel like so many projects that come before us that we approve are like putting the cart before the horse, because I think there's a general feeling that, you know, in speaking to councilmen and members and fellow commissioners, that there, there's a general feeling that, that we want to go in the direction of resiliency and sustainability. So many of our projects that we're approving aren't fitting into that, yet because of the way things are currently, we approve them because they're meeting all the requirements.
There's nothing in the general plan that requires that.
There's nothing in the general plan, so, you know, affordable housing isn't being, you know, we're not adding to RENA numbers because things are being built that are really expensive and aren't affordable, or materials are being used that aren't, aren't resilient in the building process and whatnot. So it really feels like we do need to move quickly and efficiency, efficiently with a vision and a general plan update, so we can have a, a lighthouse that is guiding us safely to shore with clarity. Because there's lots of things I've approved in my last two years, there's no, was no reason not to approve them based on, you know, what we currently have.
Based on the rules we have to enforce.
But based on my values and, and where I want to see the city go, I wouldn't have, I wouldn't have given a stamp of approval. But I had no basis, I mean, I could have said no, but it, there's, there would be no teeth in the know, other than, you know, a civil disobedience vote.
I, I feel the same way about fire and water for fire suppression. I don't think that we have a system right now by which we can assure ourselves when we see a project, and the cottages among the flowers have been going on for a long time. I did, I did look at the map, and it looks like all of, all of the project is, is within 500 feet of a six-inch fire hydrant on Mallory Way. But does that mean that, that the water purveyor can provide 1,000 gallons per minute for two hours out of that fire hydrant if there's a fire at that project? I would worry about it because if there's a fire and a wind, my house might be next. And I think everybody should think in terms of not just putting out a house fire, but a neighborhood fire. And yet, it's not clear to me that there's anything in the municipal code right now that says the city has that rule to enforce, or that they, or that we have a basis for saying no to a developer if it's not safe to develop that project on that parcel.
And, and also, that did away with a number of affordable housing units in this town, so there was that element to it, too.
Yeah.
And the, so the, and the water and, and fire concerns fits into the resiliency conversations.
Yeah, it certainly does, certainly does. So let, if, if we're going to make, if we're going to make a list of, say, three topics, I doubt we'll get through three in an hour if we do them right. But first would be the general plan update with schedule, and what's the council's thought about climate resilience and sustainability? Is that going to be in the general plan this time? Is it going to be throughout the general plan? Is it going to be in some kind of a?
It starts the conversation, that's for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then, and what is the schedule, and what is the Planning Commission's role in assisting that?
Good.
Okay, what would, we could, we could spend a lot, a lot more than an hour just on that.
And, and one of the topics that, that was discussed at the Planning Commissioners Academy was balancing that with the need for affordable housing and more units, and how do we balance that with actually being fire-ready?
Okay, so, so probably, probably affordable housing and how that interacts with the rest of the general plan update, and fire and water and all of that.
Because most of the new legislation that's coming is addressing affordable housing.
And there's a lot of funding and a lot of legislation.
Right.
But that's part of the general.
That's part of the general plan and the housing element, so that's.
Right, right.
So that's one element, so, so this is, I think that feels good, I mean.
Yeah.
I agree.
I hope we're going to get everything done, but.
No, but if, if we just talk about general plan update and affordable housing, we're, we're going to blow through an hour, I think.
Well, yeah, and I, I agree with the comments on climate change and global, global warming actually is preferable, the preferable term. I mean, it's the overriding challenge of our time right now, and I, so, yeah, I would like to have that included in the discussion on the general plan update as well, that how important it is to be very proactive and as aggressive as possible on that topic.
And it really covers all the elements.
It does, yeah.
So it's, it's really a matter of saying, is the City Council looking to go that direction as we do a general plan update? And whether they are or not, and we can weigh in on whether they should or shouldn't.
Right, because we can give advice.
Then we can talk about schedule and our role and all of those things.
Yeah.
And, and then, secondly, I think affordable housing, what, besides water for fire suppression, and actually, you know, they've, they have, I think it was 50-some second units have now been legalized, they're legal non-conforming, under the, under the amnesty program, and those should all count against our RENA numbers.
54 total.
54 total, that's, that's good, and there's probably only about 300 left that haven't been done.
We may have.
For whatever reason.
Yeah.
But, but I'm not sure we want to get too deeply into that, because you get into questions like, if somebody comes in and talks about it, and then goes away and doesn't apply, well, now the city knows there's a second unit there, is the city doing something about it? How, how are the rules enforced if you do grant someone that they're an ADU? And by the way, I, full disclosure, I also serve on the Ojai Valley Sanitary District Board, and one of the big hurdles to getting people to register second units has been the $16,000-plus connection, or capacity charge, they call it. But the rule now, the, the state has passed two or three bills that have to do with ADUs, and one at least specifically that has to do with sanitation districts. The way it stands down at the sanitary district is if a person comes in with an ADU and they have a letter, either from the county or from the city, depending on where they live, that says, "Yes, we consider this an ADU," then there's no capacity charge, because that's what the state says. On the other hand, if you look at the state code carefully, which I have had to do on several occasions now, if it is a newly-built ADU, rather than a conversion of an existing structure or a part of an existing structure, like you convert a garage to an ADU, or you carve out a part of your primary residence and make that a separate residence, that's, those are the situations where there is no capacity charge. But if you come in to build a brand-new second unit, according to state law, the sanitary district can in fact charge a capacity charge for that.
Right, but it's not supposed to be a burdensome fee, and the state feels that the $17,000 fee is in fact a burdensome fee, and always has been, and was illegal even before the ADU legislation passed.
The state feels that.
The state feels that, that's what came out of the mouth of Senator Wykowski and the head of HUD, and they said, "It is illegal to charge that much money." They can charge a fee that's, that's reasonable, but that, that is not.
Okay, well, I, leaving, leaving my personal feelings on the matter aside at the moment, I can tell you that the sanitary district's position is that it can be charged for a new ADU. Now, that, that leaves.
That is what, that is what both, both of them have said.
Yeah. And, and of course, that leaves a loophole. You could, you could get a permit to build a garage.
Right, and then later.
And then later, convert it to an ADU.
Correct.
And it's a conversion of an existing building.
Correct.
And under that situation, there would be no capacity charge, so.
Chair, is that, is that retroactive, that fee? So if someone got charged the capacity charge, and it was a garage conversion, but now there's a decision that they're not going to do that, and the state didn't want them to do that? Are there refunds being given?
I have not heard of any refunds, but remember that in the progression of state law, there were a couple of bills that were vague or, or silent on that specific matter with sanitary districts, and then there was a third state bill passed that dealt specifically with sanitary districts and a couple of other things.
The state felt, the state representatives felt that it was very clear that that was the intention, and that's when they brought up the issue of it being a burdensome fee, and so that it was illegal to begin with, even before the legislation passed. And it was all a matter of semantics, and so it was a local agency as opposed to a sanitary district, they said, "That's not us," and then it was a connection fee, so they called it a capacity fee, they basically were playing a semantics game.
I'm not arguing. I'm not arguing with you.
Yeah.
Uh, and I'm, and I'm not... Topics have come up at the other board meeting, and sometimes I vote yes and sometimes I vote no on particular issues.
It's an, it's a, it's somewhat of an ethical...
Gonna be silent on the issue for tonight.
It's somewhat of an ethical conversation that we can drill deep into, but, um, which we're not, I get that. But I know for a fact that rents have been raised because of that capacity charge. So it had, it's had an impact, impact on affordable housing in a big way.
Oh, and it's a huge fee, right.
No doubt, it's, it's a huge fee, yeah.
I know several landlords who have raised their prices because of it.
It's, it's huge for, that it's just a fee.
If they were in fact charged that fee, then that would be a cost they have to recover somehow, yeah.
I'm enjoying the conversation, but, uh, we aren't on the agenda.
I, I think, I, I think if we do general plan update and affordable housing and how those things interact, we're pretty well set for the city council meeting.
I think so, too.
Okay.
I agree.
All right, let's move on then to item four, director decisions. Um, anything that staff would wanna call out in particular in this list? It's a little shorter list than usual.
Yeah, there's not too much, the tree, uh, permit, we only had, had the, um, one permit for the two trees. We did wanna note that we actually were able to, we confirmed that those trees had an, an actual fungus by, um, checking the broken limbs. Um, so, um, we are looking at, at those types of things. There's only the one tree permit this, uh, time, and, uh, the other thing, uh, the director's exemption that's listed was routed to PC and, and, uh, council under the new policy, or the new process, so that, um, should've been routed to you back, uh, during, I think it was on, in, uh, late March. Um, but other than that, nothing jumps out at me on this, so if you have any questions.
Just going...
Well, I didn't understand that, I'm sorry.
So the, uh, if I am correct...
This is for demolition of an existing building and reconstructing?
Yes. And, um, it was a director's exemption, the director's exemptions have now started to be routed through to, uh, planning commission and council, um, so that you actually see them, you know, before they, they come out here. So I, I guess the point I was making is you, you, I'm assuming you saw that.
This one's a little bit retroactive, yeah.
Yeah, so you've already seen that, but it's on, on the list now, so I don't think there's any questions about that, 'cause we didn't get any questions about it.
In fact, all these things took place in the past, but isn't that, how could we, how could we be warned in advance of a director's exemption?
So I guess the, the director's exemption, what I understand is happening now is that when the director is actually exempting him, that he is, um, sending him out just as an FYI. And so he had sent those out to PC, which hadn't gone to PC previously, so I did a poor job of explaining it, but so, what I was saying is, I think you have seen, you all have seen that already because he, uh, Luke had routed that out when he exempted him.
Okay.
Uh, but, and I guess one of my points from that is that there's that new policy, you'll start seeing those earlier now, so...
Uh, just one quick question, I'm back on the tree. So, um, when we do have a proposed removal and you, the city does require an arborist report, is that right, on that? Okay, does the city, uh, is there a, a policy to have the city arborist then, um, basically confirm the arborist report?
So...
Act as a second reviewer?
The, um, we weren't requiring the, um, city arborist to weigh in, but...
We don't have a city arborist.
Right, right.
Oh, I thought we did.
We, we have a person that we use, but he's not technically the city arborist, but, so we don't require that person to weigh in on these, but, um, Luke had asked me to make sure to mention that he is actually taking a closer look at these tree permits and that he actually was reviewing the arborist reports on these. So he, he physically, like I said, confirmed that the fungus...
And on this one, he had an hour meeting with the arborist here in his office. I appreciate that, and, um...
Could contribute to that as well. I, I have had an arborist in my yard in the past, and I need one again. So I called Public Works and said, "Give me a list of arborists that the city trusts." And I now have a list of, I think, four or five, that, where the city would accept that person's evaluation based on past performance and such.
In the future, I, I mean, it may be a topic with one of the joint meetings in the future, but, um, uh, I think there are some, uh, discussions worth having on the tree ordinance, that, and that would be one of them.
I agree.
Yes, ma'am.
I have a question, and this, I believe, was a director's exemption, 'cause I don't recall it coming to us, and I, if it was on one of these lists, I apologize for missing it, but what's going on at the World University property? That's on, what is that, Ventura and Matilahaw?
Yeah, about 101 East Matilahaw.
On the backside of the mob shop.
Sherry probably has the most updated information. That came to PC a while back, but...
Did it come to us?
I don't, I don't believe so.
It's just a cleanup.
It, they have an application submitted for a CUP for the change of use.
And what is that?
I don't, I mean, they're gonna change the use to something other than a school.
So, so right now it's PL?
Offices, I believe it is.
Yeah, it looks, it looks like offices.
So it'd go from, so, PL?
There is, there is a residence on the property, yeah. As well as office-type buildings.
So in that, yeah.
It also looks like they're, um, adding some kind of a roof structure to screen the, uh, air conditioning.
They got a director's exemption for that.
Oh.
Um, it was just mainly for interior remodel, but what they had to do, replace the roof mount equipment, so they're replacing the screening as well.
And redid the landscape.
It's, it's an, it's an open fence on the roof right now, is that gonna be covered?
Okay.
Ground hold until they get the permit.
Oh, okay.
So I have a, I have a question, so would, if they're gonna be doing, it sounds like mixed use, that's what they're, what's proposed possibly is commercial residential, and it's going from PL, I think? Would it come to us then, or it's still considered a director's exemption?
For the change of use, it should...
Coming to you.
It would come to you...
Oh, it is.
As a CUP.
Okay.
Request to allow for med, office medical uses in a public quasi-public zone.
Hmm, okay, so, so basically, the director's exemption was to do kind of the general cleanup, and now they're gonna be pulling permits, and it would come to us.
And then they're coming to you for change of use.
Okay, for change of use, okay, thank you.
And that, you know, if I could chime in, that was a project, you know, earlier I spoke of cart before the horse. Like, I, I ride my bike back by there all the time, and I'm watching them just pour cement, and more cement, and more cement. And here we are, talking till we're blue in the face about permeable surfaces, and they paved paradise and put up a, except, yeah.
And, and as you pointed out earlier, this is probably one more place where we currently don't have a basis for saying no. Nobody has a basis for saying no to that, and they're paving the parking lot today, in fact, I walked by there. Um, or I should say repaving the parking lot, it had very poor look at him on it previously.
Yep.
Okay, any other questions of staff on the director's decisions? All right, let's move on to item five. Excuse me. Um, as I noted, I will be, I will be out of town on the seventeenth, I'll actually be back probably by ten o'clock that night, but I can't get back earlier. Uh, so, Vice Chair Nolan will run the meeting. I see, design guidelines, are, are we at a point where, where we can have a useful discussion of design guidelines?
So that's the same question?
I wasn't clear on the guidance from the January eighth city council meeting as to whether we're supposed to begin drafting some new design guidelines with, with appendices for special things, or are we supposed to rationalize the ground coverage of various design guidelines, or what is it we're supposed to do?
So, um, I'm trying to recall, that was, that was a conversation...
Staff is creating a matrix, and they will come with the proposed changes, and then you can review those changes that they're proposing.
We had asked for a matrix, I think?
Yeah.
To kind of differentiate where the overlap, apps, the overlaps were.
We'd like, I think probably, to eliminate the overlaps and make sure there aren't any holes, and then look at the guidelines themselves. Probably something that won't be finished in one meeting, but we can at least start the discussion. Uh, same with fences, hedges, walls, and screening. I suspect...
Um, Chair Quellissey?
Yes, sir.
I'm wondering, I know you're not gonna be at the meeting, and neither is Bobby, but we get the packets before the meeting.
Yeah.
Given your thoroughness...
They're also online before the meeting, yeah.
Which I always appreciate your thoroughness and crossing the Ts and dotting the Is. I'm wondering if, um, you're willing to look at those design guidelines, conversation, and writing a letter or something that then we get, since you're not here, but you and Bobby could weigh in, 'cause both those seem like com, important conversations.
They do?
Fences, walls, and hedges are also important.
Not that we're not qualified to talk about them, but your input's gonna be missed.
Is there any way, you know, and I was feeling the same way, um, we have, we have a, already a short, um, board here.
Right.
I think we should wait on those two items or do them at another time, 'cause it really, your, your input, your input is, these are, these are intense conversations here.
Yes, they are.
And, and I don't wanna have to do it twice, you know, I mean, we've already done it twice, and I, and I know Luke was a little bit, you know, kind of, okay, guys, gotta get it together, 'cause every time I bring it to you, you're not really coming with any good decisions, so I think they're ready for us to make decisions, but I don't think we're ready. I, I would really, uh, to have two of our main commissioners here not at that discussion just to me doesn't seem productive.
Yeah, so, what's our next meeting, is it May, um...
May first. Well, I'd, I'd be happy to take up those topics on May first. I, I regret that, I'm, I'm gonna be on an airplane at the time the commission meets on that date. Um, and I'd, I'd rather be a part of the conversation if we could.
I know, it throws, it throws staff off, but it really is gonna be more productive if we do it at another time.
Yeah. Do you anticipate any other cases...
That's what I was just gonna ask.
...popping up before we get to the two weeks from now?
I wasn't sure if there, is there anything pending that we can, that came in since we posted this?
Because the notices were due yesterday.
Okay.
Oh, notice was yes, oh, it's ten business days?
Yeah, we, that's why we put this here for you, so you would know notices to do by...
Has it on the side?
Reports would be due by Monday.
Ah, okay.
I, I do think that's reasonable, though, in, in this case, it's, it is hard, I think both the commission and staff feel pressure to get these things back, but to get it back with, you know, half of the commission weighing in...
Especially with our chair being, you know...
And their conversations, they, they were part of, early on with it.
Continuing discussions.
It's not a new topic.
Yeah, I could talk to Luke and see if there's something we can, you know, rearrange, but I think it makes sense to move those back either way, so, so we'll do that, and we'll...
We'll, we'll recommend to Luke that we move those two items to May first.
Right.
Um, tell me again, Sherry, how, how is it that, that items for the seventeenth of April, notices, notices you mean notifying people that are within three hundred feet of the project or whatever?
Have to be submitted to the newspaper by Monday to get in the Friday paper, to be able to be in the paper for ten days for the April seventeenth meeting.
Got it, okay.
And, uh, even discussion items require that type of notification?
No, not unless you're gonna make a decision.
Right, okay, well, that, which could happen.
But yes, we do. Typically put, um, eighth-page ads if we're discussing a big item, so that the community knows that it's being discussed on that day.
There was one tonight on, or there was one last Friday's paper about the cottages among the flowers, for example, so... Okay, any other comments at this point? I, I know we have, we have some, uh, items pending city council, and, um, pending completeness is the bowling alley.
One confirmation, are we doing a cancellation notice for that meeting then? So we're canceling the meeting?
Um, it depends on whether staff has, oh, you're saying the notices, it's too late for noticing anything for the meeting.
But not for discussions.
Yeah, so I think...
It doesn't have to go in the paper if you're canceling a meeting.
Well, no, but I'm, I think the first step is we'll figure out if we, if there's a discussion item, we can move to that meeting, and then if not, then the, then the fallback plan would be canceled.
Sounds perfect, thank you.
Yeah, okay. Still items pending city council, items recommended by city council for PC to review, right, okay. Oh, Title X code cleanup now after the general plan update. Okay, there's some kind of cleanup you can do before, but there's others where you have to reflect new policy...
Right.
In it, okay. Uh, adaptive reuse, what's that?
I actually thought that was going back to HPC, so I'll have to check with Luke, but it's, you know, um...
It sounds like it might be an HPC topic.
Yeah, yeah, reusing kind of these, you know, maybe either historic or, or, um, vintage buildings.
Okay.
Okay, so, yeah, so that's on the list, but I think it has to go to PC or HPC or as well, and I don't think it's ready yet, so...
All right, so, if there's another useful discussion item that can be brought up for the seventeenth, we'll do it, otherwise, our next meeting will be May first. All right, moving right along, uh, tab six, the planning commission liaison schedule. Chester?
I didn't, I got bumped up, I, what, my name wasn't there last week, was it? I couldn't swear.
I think you did a switch, didn't you do a switch?
I, I didn't know I did a switch, I didn't realize I did the switch, so I did not go.
Okay, well, we'll defer, we'll defer to that March twenty-sixth city council meeting report to the next time. And that's it.
Four, March twenty-sixth, J. Y. Oh, and it said you switched with Nolan, and that's why you were only twenty-six.
Oh, but we didn't, but, yeah, but I didn't know I switched. I didn't, I didn't, like, did we...
Did you ask me? 'Cause I didn't have a reason to switch.
No, and I didn't ask her, so that's why I was confused, 'cause...
I think, I think you and I might've switched.
Oh, yeah, it was you two, that's right, it was.
But...
No, I don't think I did, uh, but anyway, I didn't attempt.
It's on the video, on the Ojai City website.
Okay.
Made some popcorn.
That's what I was gonna say.
Lotus enjoy.
I went earlier, yeah.
Okay.
She was gonna go to March twelve, and you were gonna...
But we didn't say anything more about it.
Yeah, I didn't, like, know it was, like, cemented, uh, if I would've went, 'cause I was really planning on actually listening to that meeting, and then I didn't, so...
March twenty-sixth, it was a good meeting. All right, and, uh, is the MAC meeting for April fifteenth on? It is, okay, good.
And where is that, I can't...
It's down in Oakview typically.
Oakview Community Center.
Yeah, it's, it's hard to find, but when you find it, you know, you know...
Not the communities, or what, Oakview Communities, no, it is the community, it's not the other, it's not the one where...
It's, it's the one sort of on the north end of Oakview there, up against the baseball All right. I think we're out of topics. Is there anything else any commissioner wishes to bring up? Yes, ma'am?
I could do the Complete Streets meeting, if you're ready.
Good idea, we had a Complete Streets meeting this afternoon.
Yeah, but I'll do it really fast. Um, so we had our meeting today, we're still, continuing to work on our, um, Safe Sidewalks program, where we're walking around, uh, I'll just quickly show and tell. Basically, we have a, um, a street overlay, um, color-coded plan, and the streets that are going to be overlaid, um, two thousand and nineteen, we're looking at them to see if there's any other, uh, public right-of-way improvements that could potentially happen at the same time, depending on available funding, so we're doing that. And then I just wanted to make a quick announcement, 'cause I know we all wanna get going, um, and I forgot the poster, 'cause I left my stuff at home.
Oh.
But, but it's okay, because I think I remembered, and somebody can always fill me in if I, if I got the wrong dates. So what I wanted to announce was the, uh, there's a program, um, through the Green Co, Ojai Valley Green Coalition, but tied in with Complete Streets, and it's called Ojai Ride and Roll, and what that consists of, it's gonna be launched on, um, Earth Day at Libby Park, and, uh...
That's two... That's two weeks from Saturday.
Yeah, there'll be a booth and also city council member, Caesar Francina and the owner of the mob shop, Kelly Pasco are going to be doing a little talk. And then March, or excuse me, May thirteenth through seventeenth, they're going to be doing a bike to school week. And part of the fun of that's going to be kids that walk, ride, skate, somehow roll to school.
Rather than ride in a car.
Riding in a car. They'll get a ti, you know, a little ticket, a coupon with a number on it for every day that they go. And at the end, they're going to get, they're either going to get turned into a raffle and on Friday, the seventeenth, they're going to have a big raffle at the end of the day. And there's going to be like a new bike. There's even presents for the parents if they ended up walking or riding with their kids to school. I think they said haircuts and bike repairs and all kinds of goodies. So that's a really nice incentive.
Tickets for door prizes, basically, is what you get every day if you, if you walk or ride to school.
Yeah, to encourage doing that. And I wanted to also say this is all in support with our local police department. They're all behind it and been to all the meetings. On April twenty-seventh, I'm going to step back, the, they're actually having a bike rodeo or like a training session at Nordoff High School. And do you remember the, the time was it?
Noon to four.
Noon to four, thank you. That was the only thing I forgot. That'll be at Nordoff and the police department, they're actually kind of cheering and they're also getting the explorer scouts.
Explorer scouts to help with that, yeah.
And so that's a free event. And then there's also, they're also going to be doing a bike, what was the word that they called it? It's like a mass ride. Critical mass. Thank you.
Critical mass, there you go.
Bike ride. And that's going to be later in May, which I don't remember the date, but we can announce it again. So anyway, I just wanted to throw it out to anyone who wants to support that or if anyone's watching us, you know, to share that with their kids or be, or parents, please be part of that. And I think even thrown into make, there's going to be a bike to, to work day in there too. But you can go to the Ojai Valley Green Coalition website for more information. Okay, so I'm done.
Yes, Ray?
I'm going to go backwards just for a minute because I was having a little side conversation with Mr. Vega here about our next meeting and the possibility of counseling it versus discussion items. And I was looking at the discussion items not approved by council yet. And I was suggesting that cluster housing in the SLRI could be discussion items that we have on that date if we can get council to approve that because I think Commissioner Nolan and I have enough immersion to, to have that, to discuss that.
I'm part, did you say throw that, excuse me, did you mention to include that in with the, the meeting on May first?
I didn't turn the page to look, no, our meeting on April seventeenth.
Oh, okay.
Which we've asked to have those items.
Oh, I see.
Not be spoken about. And we said if there's some discussion items, so.
We could.
I was looking at.
Oh, I see.
Those would be useful discussion items, you're saying.
Those are two discussion items we could discuss without putting Luke out to having to do a lot of research and prep for because we've done a lot of research and prep on that and could facilitate that discussion.
I'd be open to that if.
Sounds reasonable to me.
Once Sherry finds out, I guess, what's going to be on the agenda or not.
You don't have to notice discussion items, though, is that correct?
Yeah, it's okay. Be good.
Sounds like a useful, sounds like it would be a useful thing to do then. And back, back on what Commissioner Nolan was talking about, the city has a plan for repaving streets when they're, when that's needed, street by street. And they set aside a certain amount of money every year to do that. And every two years, they'll let a contract to pave some number of streets because they can get a better deal if they aggregate two years' worth of appropriations, basically, to get that done. And so what we have here, and I'm sure it's available from the city, is, is a map of the city that shows what things were done in two thousand seventeen slash eighteen, what streets are planned to be done in two thousand nineteen slash twenty, which is probably two thousand twenty, actually. And so part of what we're doing at these complete streets meeting is walking around those streets that are planned for the next cycle of repaving.
The green paving.
To see if there's other flat work, curb bump outs, removal of hazardous obstructions and things like that that could be done on those that we get ahead of those particular streets that are going to be repaved. And I wanted to thank a lady who has been coming now for, for a couple of meetings to the complete streets meeting. This is a lady who is vision impaired and has a service dog. And she walked around with us today. We were up in, in the area around Topa Topa Elementary. And it's, it's, not to make a joke of it, but it's an eye opening experience to walk around with someone who does not see well, has a service dog, and you start thinking about, well, are the trees trimmed up to eight feet so that she doesn't put her eye out when she walks into a tree? Or are the bushes, you know, impinging and keeping you from walking on half of the sidewalk?
Right, or the cactus sticking out into the sidewalk.
Or the cactus sticking out? Or are there tripping hazards that have not been mitigated by concrete cutting? All of these things that we suddenly became, I think, a lot more aware of by walking around with this lady and her service dog. And that was a real service to us.
Right. And in addition, it also points out all these impediments that we're seeing are hazards if somebody's in a, is in a wheelchair or using a walker. You know, they can't go down the sidewalk, they have to go out into the street or they could tip over or they hit a mailbox and, you know, a lot of obstacles.
We noticed, for example, on Park Road that, at least on the west side, I think it's the same on the east side, but on the west side, it's a fairly narrow, like maybe a three foot wide sidewalk instead of five or six. Some places, there was a parking strip and then a sidewalk. But if you have a three foot sidewalk and there's a concrete light pole right in the middle of it, you, you can't get around it in a wheelchair, for example. This lady could with her service dog, she could go around the pole. But there are other things where we need some fixes. We need some fixes.
I have a question about that map because it, I, I ride my bike at, around town and on North Signal, you know, just north of Ojai Avenue, the street is really cracked and broken up, but it shows that that was paved in two thousand nine to two eleven, I think it said on that map. So it's not scheduled. They take my life in my hands when I'm going south between Matilahaw Avenue and Signal on the street because it's so cracked.
And there might be a couple of things, I don't want to, the public works department is the better one to ask, but I know that they've switched a couple of things here and there over the years just because of, I don't know, logistics or what have you. But you're saying on Signal.
North Signal, just, just north.
The first block north of Ojai Avenue.
Yes.
We actually walked up there and I, I don't have it with me tonight, but we did make all kinds of comments on that block.
Especially on the west side of the street.
Yeah, so, and we did turn that one in, so.
If you, if you have specific comments about specific spots, the thing to do, I think, would be to send an email to Greg Grant, copy Steve McClary on it.
Well, that would have been potentially, it could have been ten years ago when it was paved.
Got it, so it might be.
Yeah, so it may, maybe in a.
I doubt the things.
A cycle coming up soon, yeah. If it's a high use area.
Do you know many years, every, how often they be doing?
It's not that frequently.
It's not, and it probably varies too with the high use roads compared to, you know, residential areas that may not.
And back, ten years ago, remember, is two thousand eight and nine, that was, that was a tough time for city finances.
Right, so it may not have been done.
That, that is about the, the time that my block of West Eucalyptus was done. And rather than being scraped and repaved, there was a slurry put on. And because it, it helped for a little while, but money was short and that was a lot less expensive than scraping and repaving. And so I think that's why that was done. And it's, it's going to wind up needing service, you know, in less time again, but, but I think they did the best they could. But I doubt that anything gets repaved more than once every, what, twelve or fourteen years at best, I would guess, Sherry? Might be, might be a longer. That's a public works question. But again, if you, if you notice particular hazards, and we saw some, some bad sections of this, of the streets we walked on today, Park and Mountain View and Grand View and Mercer, where there's definitely some work to be done and I'm glad to see that they're on the next cycle. But if you see other things, then, you know, if you see something, say something. And even if it's just a spot treatment, that, that might be enough to hold us till the next paving cycle. All right, the last item on the agenda is a discussion with our city council liaison, and I think she just left.
Oh, she's gone to the movie.
Oh, gone to the movie, okay.
I don't know, I, I don't know. But she might be because a lot of people, a lot of people emailed me about it today. And so I know a lot of people.
All right, well, there being no other obvious business for the commission, it is seven oh one and we are adjourned.